Good evening, everyone. We apologize for our technical difficulties over here, but we think we have them under control. Thank you for joining us for the October 20th School Board Planning Meeting. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Banco, could we have roll call, please?
Mrs. Britton?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. De Show?
Here.
Mr. Delauter?
Here.
Mr. Eifert?
Here.
Mr. Emmig?
Here.
Mrs. Herman?
Here.
Mrs. Maylie?
Here.
And Mr. Rohhauser?
Here.
All present.
Okay. First on our agenda is presentations. Mr. Cherry?
I have one presentation. So this week I received in the mail a certificate from the Pennsylvania Association of School Board Association, or Business Officials, recognizing Mrs. Jennifer Banco. She didn't know I was doing this, so she looks a little put out there. But it is a certificate from her professional organizations indicating that she has completed everything that she's needed to do, and she is now officially registered with them in terms of business services. So I'd like to recognize Mrs. Banco and say congratulations.
That's it? Okay. Board Presidents, oh, sorry, public comment period. I'm skipping over things. This is our first period. This is a three-minute period for anything on or off the agenda. If you have any comments, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Michelle Dietz. I live at 2855 at Meyer Springs Drive. The comment I would like to make tonight is actually a question. Last spring, I believe it was, there was a discussion at one of the school board meetings regarding possibly realigning the elementary buildings to a primary and intermediate level, K to two, or K to three, to four, five, six, whatever. And I was thrilled to hear that last year because I was actually, I had actually joined the curriculum committee meeting, or committee, because last year when my daughter was in first grade, I saw the diversity among the elementary buildings, the inconsistencies in the way that the kids were assessed, what they were assessed on, the amount of assessments they received. The curriculum was different at every building. And I also am a teacher in the Northeastern School District where we have, our elementaries are divided into kindergarten through third grade and four, five, six. And I thought to myself, wow, you know, we have four different elementary buildings, and walking in from one elementary to another elementary would be like walking into two different school districts. And the realignment could do, has so, so many benefits. One would be consistency, and resources, and collaboration among teachers. But then on Monday, I also came to the school district to give a training on the Hoot Mifflin Program to your second through fifth grade teachers. And, you know, we started off by, obviously I needed to know the demographics of the buildings, and what kind of schedules they had, and who was teaching what, and how many teachers at each grade level. And I went through each building, and I wrote it on the board, and I just looked, and I thought, my gosh, where do I even begin? We have one building who have teachers teaching ELA for 90 minutes. We have one building who have teachers teaching it for 65 minutes. We have buildings that have departmentalized, with three-person teams, which means you have one teacher teaching ELA, one teacher teaching math, and then one teacher teaching science and social studies. But then, because that teacher who's teaching science and social studies to make an even block is teaching the spelling in the ELA program that is supposed to be an integrated program. On top of that, some buildings, or the majority of the buildings, who are departmentalized, which is the best, which is best practice, especially at the intermediate level, had one teacher teaching ELA per grade level, one teacher teaching math per grade level. And I thought, how on earth are you collaborating, and talking, and deciding what assessments need to be done, and what are the essential elements of the program when you have no one to talk to? And more importantly, you're, you have one teacher doing it in fifth grade this way, but then you have a whole nother building who has one teacher doing it in that building. And I just thought, something's gotta give, somebody's gotta change. And the only way you're going to be able to get teachers together to collaborate, and the only way you're gonna, going to have programs that are running the same way in all the buildings, and you're having the same assessments, and the same instruction, is you gotta get some alignment in your buildings vertically and horizontally. Just the fact that you have a three-person team, you know, if you combine the buildings and align the buildings, that changes that you don't have to have the third wheel. You can have, if you have six teachers per grade level, you can have two-person teams, which makes sense, and is best practice. And so I would like to, I don't know if it's been dropped, or if it's still on the table for consideration, but I would really like the board to start having that dialogue again. And if anything, just please, 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 even do a compare and contrast, or a pro and con list of your current reality, and what the alignment of buildings could do for this district, and how it would be better for teachers and students, a curriculum, and assessments, and everything. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dietz. Anybody else for public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to Board President's Communication. We will have a brief executive session immediately following this meeting tonight to establish some dates and times for a planning session for the board. That is all I have on that. So we'll move into our committee reports. Our first committee is Comprehensive Planning with Mrs. Maylie.
So we're currently working on goal number one of the comprehensive plan for effective instruction. Let's see, can we pass this out here to board members? This is Danielson's Framework for Teaching. Chris Cobb has kindly broken this down into four different domains to try to make it a little bit more understandable, a little more concise, so that the board has an idea of what types of things that teachers are being evaluated on. It's used for evaluation of effective teaching practices for our teachers throughout the district K through 12. At this point, non-tenured teachers, just to kind of give you a little bit overview here, non-tenured teachers receive a formal observation. That's not optional. That's how it's done for the non-tenured teachers. But the tenured teachers do have more options. They can opt for a formal observation, or they can opt for some other type of differentiated supervision. Obviously, that needs to be pre-approved by the principals, but one of the changes with this Danielson model is that in the past, we only evaluated 10 components of effective teaching, and this current framework has 21. And they're evaluated on all 21 components. Instructional rounds have started in the schools. They've gone through three of six of our buildings. The topics were developed by the instructional leadership team in each building, you know, therefore giving the schools and the teams some flexibility and some input. Principals are also conducting informal observations in each classroom. It's about a five-minute walkthrough. Their observations are recorded, and then they report back to Mr. Cherry in a one-to-one meeting with him about each of the buildings. We had our first Title One night. It was held at North Salem. Was that last night, Mr. Cobb? Okay. Mr. George from the Dover Library was there to share his story. Dinner was provided for everyone who attended. The reading specialists from each of the buildings gave an overview of their program. So it's kind of an overview of what we're working on as a district with the first goal in terms of effective instruction. So that's all we've got.
Any questions for Mrs. Maylie or the committee?
I understand that Title One night was pretty large, so I think we had well over 200 participants. I think the Northern Regional at some point in time joined the crowd, and they had a little fun there. George from the library, I think all of our gentlemen served our parents. So I think the event every year gets larger and larger and larger. So thank you to our principals for serving, and thank you to all our specialists who made it happen. So, good stuff.
Anybody else? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to Curriculum and Professional Development with Mr. Delauter and Mrs. Herman.
We opened the meeting with Mrs. Dietz, kind of filling, I think, giving us the same talk that she just gave the board. And then Mrs. Slater, a parent, did thank the committee and the district for changing the grading system, and that this change has helped her high school son tremendously on that. So again, she was very appreciative of that. We then moved on to, excuse me, a grading practices handbook review, looking through all the things, all the concerns and issues that we've had since beginning of the year. It was decided that we needed to get our teachers together and come up with some grading practices to implement for the school year. So they did meet on Wednesday, I believe it was, and started looking at that. The idea was to create a handbook so that everybody's on the same page, and are consistent moving forward. Some of the things that they want to do, they want to start out by surveying the staff on their current practices and their philosophy as far as grading and the like. We'd like to move toward common assessments after working through the philosophy. There are some small changes that will be implemented this year. However, the big changes are going to occur next school year. And that may change with my next letter C. Let's see. For this school year, it's been decided that the teachers are going to continue using their professional judgments for grading and such until we get everything written down and organized for them. And then Mrs. Meford did state that a written curriculum, we currently do not have a written curriculum in the district, and that is a, should be, and needs to be a priority for us moving forward. So again, under my letter C, we'll be talking about that a little bit more. And then, again, from Mrs. Dietz, initial comments, there was a large discussion held on the need for grade-level collaboration, not only grade-level, but vertical between grade levels, some of that collaboration as well. And then lastly on that, Ms. Jackson did send out an email to teachers that included some screenshots from the grade book, as well as questions answered about grading. There's concerns, teachers were anxious about not having seen the report card yet. So she and Mrs., or yeah, Mrs., Mr.?
Perkins.
Perkins, yes, thank you, I'm sorry. It's been a long day. Sat down, and Mr. Perkins created these screenshots to send out to teachers, to again help them, and hopefully alleviate some of that anxiety that many of the teachers are experiencing at this point. Finally, assessment protocols. Initially, we were going to take a look at, just looking at retakes, like test retakes, and what to do with those, as well as how to deal with late work that comes in, and how to grade that and such. Evolved again into a curriculum, and we had a really large discussion on the curriculum aspect of it. Curriculum is, as I said, is a priority that we need to get done. It's also going to be an expensive, could be an expensive endeavor. It's going to take a lot of time, a lot of energy from our teachers. The strong feelings on, from the teachers that were here was it cannot occur during school, during the school year, because of the intense involvement involved in it. So we're looking at the possibility of bringing teachers in and paying them to come in for the summer to work on the curriculum. Again, it's going to cost money, money that we didn't budget for. But as I said, we don't have a curriculum in this district, and it's needed. So as a board, I think we're going to need to look at that and have that discussion on how we want to handle that. Now, we, you know, the good part is we do have some, some parts, some research done, and some small things, so hopefully we can use some of the stuff that's already written and don't have to totally reinvent the wheel and everything on that. But again, just to give you the heads up, that we're probably going to be asked to pony up some money to do this. So, and if we do do it, we really need to direct Mr. Cherry and Ms. Jackson to get started on that as far as the selection process now, so that we can have everybody in place and ready to go once the school year ends. Ms. Herman, did I miss anything?
Sounds good to me.
Okay. That's all I got at this point.
Questions?
Just to get a little clarification, you said with the, so the teachers, the way that they're grading now, you, I think you said that they're going to use their judgment in how they grade. In turn, I guess I just, I'm looking for some clarification on that, what that means.
Pretty much, pretty much what I said. Right now, again, during our discussion with our grading practices that we had initiated agreed upon, again, it's one of those things where on paper it looked good, but once we got into practice, it just, it wasn't working. So things had to be changed. Questions were raised with, for example, you know, test retakes. How are we going to handle test retakes? Were we going to just, you know, throw out the initial grade and give them the score, whatever they get on the second grade? Are we going to average them together, or, you know, some combination in between? Are we going to require math department in the high school, they allow retakes, but they also have to, and again, Mr. Stover would probably be able to answer this better, but they're required, they require them to come in and get help from the teacher, as well as tutoring or something like that, before they're allowed to take the retest.
So each of the teachers are going to be able to determine how they want to do it because there is no common?
Unfortunately, at this, at this point, yes. Yeah. And the idea is?
That's what I thought you meant, but I just wanted to?
Yeah. And the idea here is we don't want to piecemeal it at this point. We want to get it all done, and then implement it at one time, you know, in a more organized fashion.
So essentially, they're doing what they've been doing?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's one of the reasons we, when I worked with the team yesterday, they decided they wanted to do a survey, because they wanted to collect all that information, because we felt that by collecting all that information, we can come up with what the general philosophy would be. So now we can develop a handbook that actually addresses it specifically, and it should be the major philosophy within the district. So after we collect the information, so what is it on retakes? How will we deal with that now as a district versus one department, versus a building, versus a grade? So we decided to slow down, develop a survey, and that's really what the group concentrated on yesterday. So we developed two surveys. Brad and I have some work between now and I believe next Friday to take the two surveys, kind of combine them. We'll share that with the group. The group decided one week would be good enough for the surveys to get completed, and then we will be back together on November 17th to go through those results, and then to begin to divvy up the work of who's going to tackle generalizing the philosophy around retakes, who's going to tackle the philosophy around the role in which quizzes play versus tests. So, but we thought without the input of all the professional staff, we couldn't make those decisions as a group.
Okay, good. Sounds good. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to Facilities with Mr. Emmig, Mr. Rohhauser, and Mrs. Britton.
At our meeting tonight, we had brought up, there was only one item left on our D-10 list, which were blinds, and they have been ordered. And once they are ordered and installed, then all buildings will be completed. The ball field at the intermediate school, a company has been contacted and told about, will leave us know what deficiencies they see, will give us an estimate, and both the baseball and the softball field need attention. Now, if the baseball field is renovated, the softball field must be done as well per the state. And of course, we only use those ball fields in the spring only. That's when we have the ball fields, spring, spring sports. We talked about demand response. Currently, the administration in Dover Elementary are the only building that has qualified at this time for the demand response. The remainder of the buildings will be next summer, and until we get a curtailment from MedEd, we won't know how much money we will be getting back. As far as the marquee goes, we're still looking for more funding, and tonight we're going to be selecting some architects, and it was, a recommendation was made that when we bring the selection that we make, we should have determined how much time we're going to have with each of the architect firms we bring back. It was also suggested maybe we have one night for one architect firm and stretch it out, so we don't rush into a decision. And the media center at the high school is looking great. They're waiting for flooring, furniture, and technology, and the plans are for that media center to reopen after Thanksgiving. According to the pictures that Mr. Wassler has shown us, it is looking nice. So, and Mr. Nelson asked that if any of the board members have any D-10s for next year, he would like to get started on that for December, because that goes into his budget, what he needs to know. And Mr. Benton had said that for the CTE, a supplement, he had applied for a supplemental equipment grant, which is for $50,000. If that $50,000 is awarded to Dover, he's going to purchase a die-cut printer from Minasha, and Minasha will send dies for that, but we're waiting to hear on the grant itself. We could get anywhere up to 50,000, it could fall in between that, but I think, Mr. Benton, you're still looking at purchasing the die, correct? Die cutter?
Yes. We have one, we're just waiting for the state to set the criteria on how much money the district will give. The die, the grant has been awarded to us, but it's a formula that will take place in the springtime, based, based on our daily vocational membership, and along the formula that PD uses that will determine the spring.
Okay. Mrs. Britton, Mr. Rohhauser, any other comments?
One thing I do want to add, we, at the end of our meeting, we discussed, it was Mr. Peters who left already, brought up the fact of communication and board meeting schedules. And within that conversation, we talked about the possibility, if it's feasible, to livestream the board meetings, and if the, if it's something we would have to look into, maybe we could involve the audiovisual, audiovisual kids from the high school to maybe work on that as well, if that's something that would, you know, fit with that. And is that pretty much?
Yeah, I think the other recommendation is that maybe we ought to consider going back to our committee meetings on a Tuesday, and the voting meeting on a Thursday. It was just a recommendation that, a suggestion that was made at our committee meeting.
Questions or comments?
I have a question. So what happened? We used to livestream. Do you know why we stopped doing that? Maybe we know.
No, we actually, we stopped a while ago, and we still post the videos, so typically within 24 hours, they are posted for people to view. So what it allows with Board Docs to do is Amy goes in, and she's actually able to take video clips that are aligned to the agenda. So as you go down through the agenda, if you don't want to watch the entire video, say, you can click on pieces of the video and just go to those sections. And we also have it on our YouTube channel as well. So it just takes 24, 48 hours, but it's posted for you to, for you to listen to and watch. So it's there, it's just not that night.
If I recall correctly, too, there was a cost associated with the livestream, and very few people were actually utilizing.
Yeah, we were, and we were averaging, on the nights that I was actually running, two people, usually two to three people. We had more who would come in and watch the video later, so we thought, why are we paying for it? If more people are coming in to watch the video afterwards, we should just stop paying for the service and still post the video within 24, 48 hours, because we were able to figure, we were able to see who was watching it and who was not.
Is that something that could be put on the webpage with a link, that they could do there?
It's already there.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else?
Well, we can highlight that link if you'd like us to. We can work on that tomorrow or something, so that way people see it, and we can kind of advertise it. That way people will know where it's at.
We were just thinking about being able to be more accessible to those people that maybe have younger children that, you know, they can't make it in, or, you know, they want to watch it. So that was just our.
Yeah. Well, we'll advertise it and see what we can do with membership there, too.
His question he raised, and maybe he's not aware of it, basically, you're saying is that the meeting we did Tuesday night, we approve it next month, the minutes, and you can see that live now before it's approved?
The video was posted before the minutes, correct?
I'm talking about the minutes.
Well, no, the minutes are always approved at the next month. We were talking about the video, I thought, so.
Well, his concern is that, you know, it takes a month till this is put out. You already had the next meeting before this information comes out, and he was wondering how if we should get this information out sooner, because he said, now Tuesday night's meeting, the minutes, you're saying will not be publicized till after we have next month's board meeting Tuesday night, which is, means it already is all history. And that was his point, that, you know, people don't get to see the minutes until it's a month later.
We need your approval to post them, so that's why we put them on the agenda the following month.
He was thinking, was there any way we, you know, like if we could do it two days later and prove it or something? That was his concern. I'm just expressing his concern.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to Human and Fiscal Resources. Mr. Cook?
Evening. We met this evening. We have several items to talk about, mostly just on updates. Matt Wilderson from Boyer and Ritter joined us in our committee this evening and gave us an update on the current audit status of the 2015, 2016 district year. His, his analysis at this point in time has been very positive, very good, no surprises, no red flags. Just working through a punch list of a few minor items yet to get finished up with that. The timetable on that will be, hopefully, to get everything done next month, and his plan is to be here next month to give the full board an update status then on the findings for the year. But he, he was very quick to congratulate Ms. Banco and her staff for the work that they've done. There's been very, it's been a pretty smooth sailing process this year, and he said that is not always the case, so he just wanted to congratulate and say kudos to Jen and her staff for what has happened. There's been some federal regulation changes that she had the forethought, we had, as a team, had the forethought to get approved back in April, so that we could be in a position to get a clean opinion now on this audit. So some districts did not do that, and, you know, they'll have a finding this year that they'll have to work through, but again, kudos to that forethought, and it's looking very positive. So, great job, Jen and your team. Next month, we will have the Act One Index Resolution coming before us that we will need to vote on as part of the budget process. That Act One Index means that we won't raise taxes above what the Act One Index is, and that for, for this next year is 3.5 percent. If we decided that we wanted to raise taxes above that index, we would have to seek referendum that would require a majority vote, majority it is, correct? That would require a majority vote. At this point in time, doesn't seem like we would want that, but that's, that'll be up for the board next month to approve. And along those lines- Um, and, uh, along those lines, Jen's prepared to give us a little bit of a budget update. If you recall, last month, we, we passed a budget timeline. Every month, there's some things that are happening. And she'll give us a, an update now as to what we're looking for in the next month
Okay, so as Steve said, um, we'll be presenting to you the 1718 preliminary, very, very, very preliminary budget projections, um, and the timeline requirements. The budget timeline was passed, um, by the board in September. And, um, these three items are our October budget deliverables from that timeline. Um, by October 20th, we are to give the board, um, our business office, uh, projections and budget targets. Um, no later than October 28th, um, the principals should be, um, meeting with, uh, the superintendent or talking with him regards to, um, where we see the FTEs for the 1718 year. And then, um, by October 31st, the principals should have maybe had their first PTO meeting to kind of discuss, you know, what are the wants, needs of, um, the community and, um, the support, um, that they're able to give and, um, what, um, the building budgets are going to look like. They have not yet got the site-based budget packets, but this would just be a preliminary discussion with the PTO, hey, you know, any ideas? Then, um, in November, December, January, then they're meeting with their PTOs to say, okay, this is what I came up with, and we would like your sign off to just, um, give us the, the stamp that yes, uh, we worked with you, we know, you know, we worked with the community on, um, putting that budget together. So, those are the October budget deliverables. Um, why am I... There we go. Um, as far as projections go, the O C, three years of data up here. Oh, we're working in a, um, three, three years right now. Uh, and none of these numbers are exact science or, um, exact numbers yet. Uh, we have the 2015 actual unaudited numbers. These num, numbers are subject to change. My, um, hope is that they won't change their, you know, like, Steve said, we went through our audit, um, we're just doing some minor tweaks here and there. Um, and where that budget are the, um, the year came out, um, at would be revenues of 57.3 million, expenditures of 56.3 million, leaving a deficit, uh, surplus of 965,000. The 2016, 17 projections, um, we are only in October. We're projecting out through, um, the end of the fiscal year, which there could be a lot of changes. Um, the revenues are at 57.8 million, expenditures are at 58.1, which would leave a deficit of 322,028 dollars. In those 2016, 17 projections, um, we make some assumptions. We assume that there is timely receipt of the 1617 Plan Con reimbursement. We are assuming a timely professional contract settlement. Um, and, um, then we are also, we, we also did not put in there the back pay of any Plan Recon, Plan Con reimbursements, which I'll come to next. 2017, 18 budget projections. So, these are kind of our targets right now. We, you know, did some rough, rough estimates of where our assessments lie, what our expenditures are looking like in 16, uh, 17, what they looked like in 15, 16, what happened with our, um, support contracts, what may happen with our professional contracts, so on and so forth. So, the revenue numbers, um, for 1718 are at 59.4. The expenditures are at 60.5, leaving a deficit of $1 million. Those 17 and 18 projections, um, the assumptions that I had used, I assumed a no tax increase in those numbers. Um, I assumed the professional contract will be settled. Um, at this point, I assumed flat state and federal funding, because we don't have any idea of, um, the new money that might go into a funding formula, or, um, what kind of money we'd be getting from the state, federal government. So, those numbers are flat over our 1617 numbers, which is great, that we have a 1617 budget at this point, because we didn't have one last year. Um, so, uh, also, we, um, are assuming the timely, um, receipt of 1718 Plan Con reimbursement. So, as we've had these conversations about our Plan Con reimbursement, also known as debt subsidy, um, we have communicated to you that there could be the possibility of us receiving the 2.1 million dollars that we're owed, um, from back years, from projects that have, that weren't approved. We have finally gotten our Part H approval for all of those projects and are in the process of submitting our forms to, um, the state to get all that money back. The 2.1 million dollars is not in any of these numbers. Um, because what, what, um, I assumed is that that money will kind of be, if we receive it, when we receive it, put aside, um, for maybe some capital improvement projects, whether, you know, be new renovation, um, whatever needs done here in the district. So, um, I didn't factor in that 2.1 million dollars in any of this revenue. What is factored in on the Plan Con side would be the amount that we are due for each fiscal year. So, the amount that we were due for 1516 is in 1516 numbers. Um, there's about 900,000 that were due for 1617, and about a million due for 1718. Um, so, those are the projections as they stand right now. Do we have any questions on that before I go on to the next slide? Okay. Um, so you ask what's next, uh, in our budget timeline? By November 15th, we would really like the board to communicate to, um, administration and the business office as to what your, um, hopes are for a budget target. Again, I made some pretty broad assumptions in my budget projections, being no tax increase. Um, and I know, you know, Chuck had mentioned a couple of things earlier that might affect some budget numbers. We're just trying to get an idea of where we start from. So, um, the budget projections that I gave you are baseline, um, pretty much services from one year to the next, nothing new. Have that baseline budget that we started with last year and added the options, too. So, um, I asked by November, um, the 15th meeting, if I could get some feedback as to a budget target. That would be wonderful. Um, on November 15th also, as, uh, Mr. Cook had stated, we will be, um, asking you to pass the Act One Resolution. I am, um, under the assumption that, um, the board, um, didn't wish to raise taxes over the adjusted index of 3.5%. So, that resolution will be on for board approval, um, next month. Um, November 18th, and by November 18th, we would hope that the principals are finalizing their FTE requests and forwarding them over to Mr. Cherry and the business office. And, um, the business office will be working on our rolling projections. It's a never-ending process. Numbers constantly are changing as we get new information. Um, and we will also be working on the site-based budget model and getting the budget packets out to the buildings, um, budget managers, uh, including any administration, but, um, central admin budget managers, so they can start formulating their budgets and looking what, what we spent last year and, um, you know, what, what their needs are here. So, um, those are kind of the deliverables for 15. We hope to be able to update at least the committee on a monthly basis of where we are in the budget timeline and, um, where we need to be the next month. Okay? Any questions?
Yes. Uh, in years past, we got five-year projections. Do you know when that will be coming out?
Um, I can forward that to you at any time. I have them ready.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just picking up from, from where Jen left off. As you can see, it's quite the daunting task to basically be working in three-year, a three-year span all at one time, looking at 1516, finalizing it, looking at the current year, and now planning ahead. It's hard enough, it's hard enough to budget one year. You're really working in three years, so it's quite a, quite a challenge. So, um, thank you for the update, Jen.
You're welcome.
We also talked briefly at the end of our meeting tonight about the, uh, the unpaid time off policy. As you recall, we started to look at that last month, just reviewing, um, what our policy actually states. And, and right now, um, Mr. Consino had contacted some other districts to kind of see how they operated, how they, um, how their policies lined up with our policy. And we discovered in that, that there's quite a variance there. So, our next step is to check with PSBA, kind of see what, if they have any guidance on it. Uh, maybe look at a little bit more in-depth. No decisions, no, no intense discussions tonight, but it's a, it's something we need to continue to look at and see if there's a way to, or see if there's a need to make any modifications to it. So, that's all I have for tonight.
Any questions for Mr. Cook? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to Safe and Supportive Schools with Mr. DeChau.
All right. Um, today, we were looking at Policy 203 dot one, HIV infection. Uh, we compared our pol, current policy to others, and it seems that, uh, a lot of school districts have subcategories underneath 203. Um, we would like to take a look at what PSBA has to offer for those subcategories, and if there's some type of login information that we can actually get to, where we can see that. So, we're going to, uh, need information from them. Uh, we also did the same thing for Policy 249, the bullying and cyberbullying. We'd like to compare that to the most updated, uh, policy for PSBA as well. And that's all we have right now.
Any questions for Mr. DeChau? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to the superintendent's report. Mr. Cherry?
Uh, our group, uh, met for, with the Dover Eagle Foundation, and we started our conversation with Bobby Strauss by giving an update on our, uh, golf tournament, uh, for the spring. So, it looks like we are, uh, gonna possibly go with Honey Go? Honey Run, sorry. So, Honey Run Golf Course, so that seems to be the, uh, the place of choice. So, she has a few meetings scheduled in the next few weeks to get that set up and so forth. Uh, so we, as a group, were pretty excited about that. Uh, regarding our fall, uh, event, we would like to work with the high school, possibly to do something around their, uh, community night. Uh, this year, they did a, kind of a community pep rally. We thought about doing something that would start in the middle of the day, leading up to the pep rally, and kind of doing some activities right around a fall festival-type of event, where we could do some contests with the community and get the community involved, just to kind of strengthen the program, uh, and bring some more attention to, to the, um, to the, uh, homecoming event. Uh, afterwards, we talked a little bit about some sponsorship opportunities, so, um, we're gonna spend some time kind of delving into maybe some educational opportunities that the Dover Eagle Foundation can sponsor at the school. The first one we were thinking about is this kind of whole notion of awareness and what that needs to look like. So, we, uh, are going to take a look at some organizations around, uh, York County to see if we can partner up with them and possibly do some activities at the school that would invite the community in to learn a little bit more, um, about, let's say, either like ageism, uh, or something around disabilities and so forth. Uh, so, we, we kind of got some things to, to, uh, figure out there, uh, but we figured that might be a nice way of sponsoring some activities around the district that really don't cost money, nor allow us to kind of have our hand out to say, can you bring us money as well? Um, so, I think we had a, we, good meeting there, and, uh, we look forward to some of the upcoming planning sessions that we have for our events, uh, in the spring. The second item that I have here is kind of the discussion on the architects. Last month, we had five architect firms come and present, uh, approximately 20 minutes to us, I believe, uh, their ability to support possibly a con, uh, a construction project here in the district. And, uh, one of the things that, um, Mrs. Banco and I laid out was the possibility of inviting firms back that we felt could handle, uh, either a renovation or a project, uh, here in the district. So, we wanted to, A, have the opportunity to provide you the space to have some dialogue, uh, but also afterwards then to kind of vote on her, uh, which architects you would like to come back. And then, we could set up that process of how we want to, to do that, whether it's done through two different meetings, one meeting, uh, as Mr. Amick had mentioned during his report out. So, I turn the floor back over to the board to discuss architects. And then, we also have a ballot here, uh, for each board member to go ahead and check off their selection.
Comments from board members?
Yeah, the one architect firm, McKesick. We had stated that we wanted an architect firm that was in local proximity of our school district, so we would have some quick response. They only have a satellite office in Harrisburg. Their main office is in North Carolina, which is far from close proximity to us.
On this, uh, architects, are we going to, now, and I know what we're gonna do tonight, we're gonna pick two or three architects. But the bottom line is, are we coming up with things that we want, looked at before they come back to us? Like what they feel if you did renovations in the Hermia School, what their feeling was? And there's talk about, there's some updates that need done in the high school? Uh, and then the possibility of another building, and if there's room on that site to do that, to accomplish everything we need to accomplish. Now, are we gonna have guidelines that we're gonna give them before they come? Or are we gonna have them come and then we're gonna give them guidelines?
I would think that we would provide them with some guidelines as to what we're expecting out of this process, you know, and recommendations from building versus renovating space, land, all that. So, I think we would have to have some discussions around that and provide them with that equal information and bringing it back.
That means that we'll have a meeting coming up, that's something we'll discuss before we-
Should, yes.
Send out an invitation for them. Well, then, they'll have to-
Or we could-
Do their homework.
Yeah, yeah, we can send that out to them, so they can get it done. Why don't we just go down the table, and each board member can state their thoughts on this? We'll just keep going down?
As far as what-
Your thoughts are of the process, how you'd like to handle the process, maybe your architects of choice, you know, what you're thinking?
Um, there were a few of them that, that intrigued me. Um, there were a few that stood out to me that I would certainly like to ask more questions of. There were things that were kind of thrown out that I would love the opportunity to ask more questions, things like no-interest loans, which kind of came at the end of a, of a presentation. I was like, what, what's that about?
I can answer that question for you. Um, the no-interest loans are the QZAB, um, loans. And, um, every year, the, um, government puts them, puts them out there, and, um, you have, you have to apply for them by a certain deadline. And they are available every, um, you know, financial advisor, um, you know, does, you know, recommend, um, using them. And depending on timing is depending on whether you can actually, um, get the opportunity to, um, utilize those types of loans. So, they're not specific to just architectural companies trying to, um, apply for them. You, you would do that through your financial advisor.
Okay. Well, there was, I would say there were three of the five that I would certainly be interested in asking more questions of. I don't know if it would be the consensus, how many we're going to do, but I have three of them. I don't know, do you want me to share with that?
You don't have to, no. We can get a balance.
Okay, all right, all right. But that's, that's kind of where I walked away from it. I've had three in my mind. Um, it was interesting to see, you know, some of the projects that others did. There were some that were done in renovation, as opposed to a new building. So, um, I'd certainly, I, I picked out three in my own mind that I would like to see back.
Mr. DeChau?
Um, I saw, I was interested in two firms, um, basically along the lines of everybody else. I'm interested to see what they have to bring to the table for remodeling, as well as building new.
Smiley?
Yeah, I mean, I, excuse me, I definitely had a, a top three. Um, I share Mr. Amick's concern about the one, Ms. McKissick, being so far away. Um, you know, I, I felt, I felt like they came in, and, and some of them did talk about, uh, remodeling- You know, I felt, felt like they came in, and some of them did talk about remodeling. They all focused, of course, on a new building, which they weren't giving a, given a whole lot of specifics, so I understand why they did what they did. But I did like the ones that blended a combination of the two, and I would like an opportunity to ask those two or three on my top, you know, how they would handle each type of project.
I also had three that I was interested in, I thought kind of stuck out to me. I do share Terry's concern with McKissick, although I, I would like more information on that satellite office is, you know, how big is that satellite, and how, how big is that, is that office? How many folks are in that office that would, that we could utilize? I will say the one thing I, that's stuck out with me with them was on their initial introductory letter packet that they sent to us, whereas the others just more talked about themselves. I thought McKissick really, it seemed to me they took the time to really delve into us, as well as the plan con, some middle that we had. They actually made some comments in that initial letter concerning the project and the initial drawings that, that we had submitted and had seen what they felt were some changes that could have saved some money off of those plans. So, that kind of intrigued me that, and I'm sure the other ones did that, the same thing, but McKissick kind of took that extra time to actually, you know, say that to us, so. But again, I have three, and I would like to find out what the process is, and I think we need to give them a process of what we're looking for, for those meetings, so they can prepare adequately.
I agree with everything that's been said by everybody so far. I also had it down to three, so if I have a say here, I prefer that we actually ask three to come back to present, not just two, because I'm hearing others saying that there were three involved. I did go through the, I have them back here, the 82,000 pages of information that we received afterwards from each of the companies, and the three that I had jotted down during the presentations stuck out at me still as I read through their information as well. I think they are very strong. I think we, as a board, will have to have some discussions as to how we want to lead them. I'd like to see them come back with a 90-minute presentation for us, up to 90 minutes, to discuss their full capabilities, really give us some examples of projects they've done from both a renovation and a construction standpoint. Talk to us about the advantages and disadvantages of renovation versus construction, because you can open up some cans of worms when it comes to renovation. That scares me a little bit sometimes, but I think it's a conversation that we have to have too before moving forward. So, I'd recommend as we, you know, make some choices tonight, that we actually do three at this point, so.
Ms. Britton?
Basically echo what everybody else has said so far, and I have three as well. And the one thing we did talk about in our committee meeting was possibly visiting some of the sites of the, the construction that some of them have done that are in the area, just to see the quality and talk to the, those that dealt with the firm to better understand what it was like dealing with them. You know, once, when they're in here, it may be one thing, but actually working with them and dealing with them, we may find it's different. And then I also share the concern, I suggested that maybe we look at those schools who have done renovations, what was originally proposed as a budget, and what was the actual cost to just kind of get an idea. Like you said, you never know what may come up, so we need to keep those things in mind as we move forward.
We're experiencing some of that right now, or maybe with some of the project of high school, where there was some issues that were beyond what we originally thought that would create some issues, so.
And that was talked about as well.
Mr. Remick?
I've only selected two, so I'll have to come up with the third one if need be. And I gave you my comments on the one.
Well, they might as well have been speaking Greek to me, because I don't understand any of this. But I did, I was, and I'm going to say who. I was interested in EI simply because they had done something for it before with the North Salem, so I thought, okay, we know what we're getting. And I don't know if Dave was here when we, when EI did North Salem. Were you here for that, Dave? Okay. Well, anyway, were you here when they did live? Oh, great. Okay. Striking out here. Okay.
They did it both the same year.
I'm sorry, what?
They did it both the same year.
Oh, they did? I don't even remember that. Okay. I remember North Salem, okay. All right, and I want to say this about Crabtree. The thing that still drives me crazy about them is the fact that we have, we have a sign out here that says the administration office, and the lights for the sign are over there. So, if they couldn't design that little tiny thing, right, how could they design a whole building correctly? And he's not listening to me. But anyway, that was, that's my biggest complaint about Crabtree. Every time I look at that out there, I just want to spit as far, but anyway, so I don't know. I, other than E, I have no idea. I have no idea what we're looking for as far as what you look for in an architect. I have no clue. And I think a field trip would be terrific. I could actually see something then, and then, and then they, they explain why they did this and this, and why it makes sense, and that would sure help me make a decision.
And I would hope that the board would really emphasize, I mean, we're taking a look at secondary programming. Secondary program is uniquely different than elementary programming, so it's great to walk through an elementary school, but if you take a walk through most elementary schools, they're somewhat the same. But when you start getting into secondary programming, they are unique beasts all in themselves, because secondary programming has different avenues. I mean, we have a strong CTE program, so there's a need for special sizes of classrooms and so forth there. You have general academics that need types of things. You have the arts that need special programming as well. So, I would hope that through your field trip that you emphasize with these architects, show me what you've done with secondary design versus elementary design, and I, because I think that's where you can really begin to drop people off in terms of what they can truly do. I mean, even with the clearinghouse that was supposed to be up in the state, the one area that they did not feel ever was secondary architect, or secondary design, because no one could ever agree, because as you travel from district to district, there was always a different emphasis kind of for the end of the road for students and what that would be. If you were in a strong arts district, obviously you would probably have a high school that emphasized the arts, and you would see a much larger arts area. If you were in a strong athletic, let's say, community, you might see an athletic area within your building that's much larger than the rest. So, I would hope that you would keep that in your mind in your questioning, and also your, your format for the presentation to say, what can you show me that you've done for secondary students versus elementary? Because I think that'll be an important piece that you'll need to have for your decision.
Would you like to give us simple ballot?
Please say two, and I think the consensus is three, so disregard my two on here.
If you only like one, just vote for one as well.
Okay.
Curious question, are these by any chance in the order that they presented?
Yes, they are.
They are?
Oh, wait, no, they're not. No, they're not. They were just in, I'm sorry. I went off my presentation thinking yes, but no.
Do you want us to rank our, like, one and two?
No, you just check them off.
Okay.
Are we to check them, or give them a one, two, three?
Let's check them.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine.
Is this a secret ballot? Oh, okay. Should we pass it down? Pass mine down, please, thank you.
golf tournament that would be held at Mountain Mist? Because that's more of my speed golf down by Bill Max there. I'd do a lot better at that.
This one did make these term.
No, I think not. Okay, so I have EI coming in at seven votes, Crabtree coming in at six, and both McKissick and RLPS coming in at five.
Shall we have all four come in? I mean, this is a big, big deal to us in this community. I don't think it hurts to have all four. What's the board think?
I'm okay with four.
Everybody else okay with all four?
It's a lot of people.
Maybe we won't do 90 minutes with four. We might trim that back, but.
Still thinking like an individual evening, or are you thinking, you know, maybe two a night or something like that?
I think we'll, maybe we'll split it into two, you know, two nights with two presentations and an hour each.
Dave, can I just ask Mr. Nelson a question? Do you remember which of the part of McKissick was in North Carolina and which was in Harrisburg? I think it was just like a design team and an architect.
The architects were in North Carolina.
Yeah, it's, it's two separate firms, really, so.
Somebody has a folder, is it on the back cover?
Fanning Howey?
Yes, Fanning Howey and McKissick. So, McKissick is the architect, correct? And maybe Fanning Howey. Fanning Howey is the architect, but they are the ones in North Carolina. So, I just wanted to share that information with you. I didn't know if that would change your thoughts at all, because I knew Chuck asked head out the question.
I think at this point, we have the four come in, two nights, an hour for each group. Everybody else okay with that?
Okay, explain, what are we doing? I'm sorry, I missed that, I was talking.
I'm thinking two nights, and we'll have two presentations each night.
So, we're going to do all four?
We'll do all four, and give them each an hour. I think an hour should be sufficient. Okay?
And, and will we, will we have special meetings for these? Or will these be during?
These would be special meetings, yeah, because you're talking two hours alone just for that, yeah.
I know these meetings that the community is invited to as well.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Are we, are we going to set those meetings now, or are we going to, I mean, how are we going to?
We're going to have an executive session, as I mentioned earlier, to set some dates.
All right, the last thing I wanted to update the board on was our enrollment. So, October 1st is always an important date. It's a, you know, where they take the official snapshot of the district in terms of what students are here. It's actually used on what's on our SPP. They use that in Title I services, the federal government does when allocating Title I, IIs, and III monies to our district. So, I just wanted to share with you kind of where we are with that. There we go. So, this is a snapshot of kind of our facilities. I think Dave, at one point in time, has actually shown you this graph up on the wall as well. So, what you're, I would like you to go towards the last two columns there. If you see, the number on top indicates that they have a higher enrollment this year than they did last year. So, you'll notice for the high school, for example, they have 994 students this year. Last year, they had 896. So, you'll see that four out of our six schools have a higher enrollment this year than they did last year at this time, because actually this presentation was given October 20th of 2015. So, it's ironic that it's literally a year later, and I'm presenting a very similar presentation. So, you'll see that Wagglestown's down, but you'll also notice that they still have 512 kids. That's still a lot of kids for that particular building. So, what does that mean in terms of utilization? You'll see there that lives using about 97% of their student space. Wagglestown's at 76, Dover Intermediate Schools at 78. I think what's important to note here, because some people will say, well, my gosh, they're not very high on their utilization space, so that must mean they have room. You need to remember, when we turn those blueprints into the state, we identify every space in that school as possible student space. So, if over time, let's say the school decides to use that room for something else, they actually need to amend that with the state to take that actual square footage off of the plan, which would then increase utilization space. So, I kind of throw that note out there, because like I said, you'll look at Wagglestown, for example, and it says 76%. I would be pressed to say, if you walk through that building, there's a lot more. The classrooms are full, the building's full. You're not going to see, you know, 25% of the building actually empty. So, I kind of throw that caveat out there just to make sure that people do realize that. In terms of enrollment, K6, this is what you'll see. So, Dover Elementary, you'll see the elementary schools going across the top, the grade levels going across the left there. You'll see the total enrollment at the bottom of each column there. You'll see the number of students, and in parentheses, you'll see the number of teachers that have actually been, that are actually teaching each one of those grades. You'll see all in all, we have about 1,930 students, K to six, in our district. What you'll now see, though, is if you take those numbers that I just showed you and you divide them up by the staff that they're in the district, this is where you begin to see some interesting patterns. So, what you'll see there in the green are where we have some of our smallest classroom sizes around the district, and what you'll see in blue is where we have some of the largest classroom sizes. So, you'll see at Wagglestown, for example, your four, five, and six, very large classroom sizes compared to, let's say, Dover Elementary that only has 17 students per classroom. So, you know, that was just a way of showing you, I think that gets back to what Mrs. Dietz had talked a little bit about earlier, which is, you know, one, we're inconsistent from building to building, and, you know, when you begin to hear, you know, teachers talk about, and administrators bring to me, oh, my gosh, we're at our 26th kid, we're at our 27th kid, but then you take a look at the building that's two miles down the road from you, and they have an availability of 24 kids, because it's spread out across three teachers, for example. You begin to have that conflict with yourself between, do I do what's right, which is I take a teacher out of a building, slide them to another building, so I can reduce class size and not increase expenses for the district? Or do I keep climate culture stable, so not to make anyone mad, but now I have a classroom of 27 kids at one building, same grade, two miles away, I have 17 kids? So, I just throw that out there for, for us to take a look at. Enrollment at the, at the middle school and the high school, it's actually increased. You'll notice before, we're up about 100 kids at the high school, and we're about 75 students at the intermediate school. On average, there are about 24 to 25 kids at the intermediate school, and on average, 25 to 24 kids at the high school. And I say on average, because you could probably walk into some Spanish classrooms and see 31 kids, but also walk into, let's say, an AP class and see six kids. So, I think as an aggregate, if you roll it all out, you'll get about 24 to 25 kids per class at the high school. So, I throw out there kind of some future scenarios for you to discuss. There are obviously no decision making now, and that's that whole notion of, can we afford financially to have discrepancies, particularly at our elementary building? So, if you kind of take a look at the southern portion of our district, they seem to be heavier in enrollment compared to our, what we consider our northern part. So, I think one of the questions you have to wrestle with as a board is, is that fair? Is it fair that, you know, maybe enrollment's increasing in one area, but it's stable or decreasing in another area, and how do we stabilize that? So, I throw out two options, as Mrs. Dietz- So I throw out two options, as Mrs. Dietz said, for the board to begin to talk about and think about as, as we take a look at these numbers. And the first one, obviously, is just the idea of redistricting. And redistricting can simply mean two things. We take a community that's now going to Waggles Town and we shift the boundaries and allow those students now to go to Dover Elementary. And we'd also do the same thing for Lives. Take a community that's now associated with Lives and redistrict them to go to North Salem. That might be one scenario in which we would look at to kind of balance out numbers across the district. The second scenario could also be, could possibly also be creating what Mrs. Dietz was talking about in terms of bands of schools. And that is creating schools that have more in common in terms of grades. So in this instance, you might look at a K one building, a two, three building, a four, five building. In the short term, maybe a sixth grade building, but maybe sixth grade could then be absorbed into a larger middle school. And if you did that scenario, I threw out there in the chart, what your classroom sizes would be based on staffing right now. And I think you would see now you have much more leveled classrooms, you have nice classroom sizes, and you might get to some of those other things that Mrs. Dietz spoke, spoke to you about in terms of resources and consistency. So in your consideration and in your conversations in the future, I just say that these are other things you might want to consider. If you take a look at scenario one, which is where you redistrict, what communities will you select and then how we're going to communicate that? If you take a look at scenario two, obviously you're going to want to take a look at transitions and what that means to children in terms of being consistent as they move from building to building. You also want to take a look at transportation and what impact would that have on students in terms of transportation? I know last year when I presented it, we had three, we had three buses over an hour. This year, for instance, we have no buses over an hour. I think our longest bus ride is fifty-four minutes. So, you know, what does that mean in terms of transportation? And also, how would you assign the buildings? Which building would be, which grade band and what would that look like? And I also throw out this other point and that is, you know, there, there is a possibility of a future housing project that we have going on right now at Admir and Davidsonburg Road. And that is kind of important to note because it's been approved for two hundred and twenty-five units and it would impact Waggles Town drastically. And not that they're in there with bulldozers, but we have seen signs that they're actually in there cleaning, clearing brush and trees and so forth. So that gives us some inclination that something might happen there. So I think these are real conversations that you're going to have to have at some point in time. Waggles Town is not in the mode of accepting, even if you just did a quarter of those. If you just said out of the two hundred and twenty-five, a quarter of those would have a child or two, you're talking an influx of sixty to a hundred students into a building that's already at seventy-six capacity, seventy-six percent. So I throw that out there to say at some point in time, it doesn't need to obviously happen in November, but you're really going to need to wrestle with the idea of what, what are we going to do to kind of stabilize the enrollment within our district and to ensure that we have a little bit of equality, so to speak, in terms of class sizes for all of our teachers? So those are our numbers. Those are where we stand at this time and I just wanted to present that information for you to consider.
One comment on your situation about the Admir and Davidsonburg Road. One of the reasons you saw things being done out there is because of residential area. And now they have to follow residential rules of mow your weeds and clean up. And that's, was the job the township got accomplished. And the other rumor I hear is probably nothing will happen until the new shore line goes in from Davidsonburg to seventy-four.
You had mentioned in the presentation, the redistricting concept. We had done that not that long ago, if I'm correct. Do you know when was the last time that we did that?
Four years ago, I'm seeing the numbers.
There are some extraordinary differences there.
Right. I mean, you know, if you look at scenario one, it's which community and so forth and then how do you communicate that and how do you make that decision? So, yeah.
But I, I want to add on to that. I, we were live before the redistricting and luckily, my daughter had only completed kindergarten, but there were a lot of parents in my neighborhood who the kids were devastated because you're ripping away, you're ripping them away from a community and from their circle of friends that they've known, I mean, the kids in fifth, sixth grade. So I, I just think we need to take that into consideration in addition to the things that, that Michelle pointed out, the benefits of, I think I lean more along with her, you know, thought processes as the grades, keeping them together. Because I know, I know what we went through with the last redistricting and, and I would hate to see that done again. And I won't even touch the Admir and Davidsonburg project. You've all heard my.
Your spiel, yes.
My spiel.
We know, you're passionate about that one.
If you ask me right now where my head was leaning, it would be for the second option, you know, of creating like a K one building, a two, three building. I think from a transition point, you see that same grade going the whole way through together. It gives the teachers the opportunity to collaborate, you know, work together, align that curriculum more, things like that. So that's just where my head is right now, but that's another big discussion we're going to have to have.
Thinking back a few years to when the K to six alignment took place in the first place, I know one of the selling points on it was that it would afford the opportunity for all four buildings to do the same thing. It sounds like by the description that that's not really happening. I would be curious to know what kind of collaborative efforts could happen as a result of the reconfiguration. If you have all the staff in the, the same building, it just, it, it not only seems like resources would be better utilized, but it seems like everybody being there together to discuss what's going on. It, it seems like it ought to obviously help with collaboration and getting things done together. I, it just seems reasonable. And kids moving from building to building throughout the, the six years, five years, whatever, you know, it, it ends up being, I know there's transitional changes there, but when you think about the potential for a group moving together, their peers would all be moving together with them, I would wonder if that might, you know, kind of suppress some of the transitional issues that you would have if you were pulled out of a building and sent to another building like you were describing? Because I would think the kids could adapt to a new building a lot easier if, you know, their friends go along at the same time and, and they keep that consistency at least. So I think of the two options, I would prefer to take a look at it, at the second one more so than the first one, if I, if I had to, you know, raise my, a vote. The other thing too is because the classes could then all be evened out, that could potentially reduce the need to hire a teacher at a specific building. Whereas, you know, if you do get bumps along the way, you know, that could be handled all in one building instead of having to add another staff member just for that specific building that's, you know, part of that district. So it seems, it seems like there's definitely some advantages. It'd be curious, I'd be curious to know how other districts who have transitioned to more of a, you know, individual building like that, what's been their positives and negatives? And it might be a good way to reach out and find out things that we could potentially be looking for.
I can tell you from personal experience, when North Salem was a five, six building, I had the opportunity to teach in there for a total of two years. And as a new teacher, again, I can only speak for myself, but to have all the fifth grade teachers in one district together as a new teacher, I had eleven mentors that I could go to as a new teacher and, and bounce ideas off of, which was, to me, was just amazing. And then another thing that they had done, you talk about collaboration, they had monthly meetings with, one month, or maybe one week, it was fifth grade teachers all got together in the morning and then the sixth grade teachers. And it was with the principal and you, you talk discussions, concerns, ideas, those kind of things. And I, for, for collaboration, I think is just a tremendous advantage for that. Again, that was, that's my personal take on that. And I'm sure others will have different ideas on that. But for me, I, I, I felt I grew tremendously in those two years because of that, so.
Anything else from Mr. Cherry? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to our miscellaneous category for any other comments from our board members.
I'd like to say something. I, I took Mr. Wassler up on his invitation to visit the high school and I did that. And it was really good because like I'm one of these that I don't want to build a new high school, but after I walked out of there, you know, the crack has started and, and the kids made this for me. So like I had to wear it for all of you to see. And they did it right in front of me, so I was really excited about that. I got two shirts out of it, so. But I did see, you know, I'm not that familiar with the CTE program, so that was neat. That was really neat to see all those things that are going on there. And I had to be educated that, you know, businesses and colleges want these kids to be able to do the things that we're, we want them to do, but we don't necessarily have the facilities or the equipment to do it either. So I think we need to do something. It's not a very good, it's not a, a great place. I'm sure they, they love it there, but there wasn't a lot of room. They make the shirts and then they sell them right across the hall at the store, which I thought was really cool. And they have a bank in there, you know, like every, all the teachers can have their own little accounts. But the library, okay. I don't see it as being that done, but some of you were saying how neat it looks. I thought it looked really rough. But he explained, so I had vision as to what he wants to do, that Mr. Wassler, what he wants to do there. And I was excited about that. Then we went in the back room where, what's her, that's the new li, the new secretary's, or I'm excuse, sorry, the new librarian's name. Well, anyway, she was there. And she has piles of books everywhere. She's taking them out of the system and I would like to go spend an hour here and there to help her just take, rip barcodes. She's piles of books that just need the barcode ripped off. So I would gladly give her my ti, my time for that. She does have some kids coming up to help her. But honestly, I don't see how they're ever going to have that done by November. It was supposed to be this month and there's just so much to do. But I think visually now when he explained it, it sounds like a really exciting place to be. So anyway, if any of you have any concerns about building a new high school, that's probably the place to go because I saw the definite need. And he explained to me about the two classes that are coming up from the middle school and how his enrollment is going and how it's going to go. And then he explained too, like some of how full some of his classes are. So anyway, it's, it was a great morning, so go and you might get a free shirt. Well, and you know, I said to this, the, the boy that did this, I said, so you know, what are you getting out of this? And he said, because I love doing this so much now, I think I'd like to own my own shop, open my own shop when I graduate. So, you know, if we can do that for one kid, isn't that great?
Mr. Rauhauser, did you have something?
Yes. On this paper we got here this evening about, we're sending down an invitation, it says on December 1st, are we meeting the following Monday then, having a regular board meeting? Or are we doing like last year, meeting on Monday, having this and have a reorganizational meeting?
Correct.
Which has to be held the first Monday of December?
Correct.
And this is Thursday.
December 1st? I'll have to check. Amy just handed that to me today, so I'll check it, but it is December 1st.
I don't think the first is on a Monday.
It is a Thursday.
All right.
Or is it? I don't have a calendar.
December 1st is a Thursday.
Right, so we're doing reorg December 1st.
That's a Thursday. It's a Thursday.
He says Thursday.
Thursday. December 1st is Thursday.
The reorganization has to take place on the first Monday.
Well, that would be after that.
That'd be the fifth.
Last year, we did it all one time.
Right. So we'll, we'll change the date on it. The idea was to once again do it the same way, so we'll look at that. We haven't sent the letters out, so we're, we have them about two weeks away.
I just, you know, pointing out so because we have advertised for first Monday.
Okay.
And that's a state policy, not a.
Dover.
Dover policy. That all reorganiz, reorganizations take first on the first Monday in December. I'm just bringing that up.
Thanks, sir.
Showing you that I read it.
Yep.
Anybody else? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to our last public comment period. This is a two-minute period for items on or off the agenda. Again, if you have anything to state, please come to the microphones and state your name and address for the record. Seeing nobody on the move, we'll move to our future meeting announcements. Our next board action meeting will be November 15th at 7:00 PM. And our board committee meetings will be November 17th, beginning at 6 o'clock PM. And our board planning meeting will be at November 17th at 7:00 PM that same day. So if there's no further discussion, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Do move.
Is there a second? Did you second? All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries, we're adjourned. Thank you.